Okay, and late call. Thursday, July 22, 2021, Board of Education meeting. Board of Education meeting to order at 7:06. Roll call?
Chairman of the House of Representatives. Vice Chair and Secretary. Here. Secretary of Education. Here. Janet Bosama. Here. Jeffrey McMillan.
President.
Vincent Mason. Sophie Reitz.
Visitors comments, anybody? Any?
Pledge.
Oh, we did pledge. Oh, my gosh, I need to put my glasses on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, glasses on. Nancy Waller. Any visitors comments?
Well, you see, there's now a way to talk to you.
If it's limited to the agenda, you can do it now.
If it's what?
If it's limited to the agenda, you can speak now.
I don't know the agenda, this is new to me, so.
Oh, you can let, he can go now.
He go, absolutely, go right ahead. Just if you give your name for the record, please, your name and address.
Oh, Mark, 77, Pissapod, North Grand Canyon. Again, I don't know the agenda, so.
That's okay, no, go ahead and speak, it's fine.
I just, I just want to find out, and I have a good feeling about this Board of Education. I feel that you people are on board with things, but has everyone? I assume everyone has heard of critical race theory going around the entire country?
Yes, we have. I'll speak to.
Aware of what it's about?
I'll speak to that. There's obviously quite a bit of press going on right now with that. We have a historical curriculum in place here. We have not made any changes to our curriculum, nor are we looking to make any changes. We are fair and balanced. We want to teach traditional historic information. We want to build on it, and we want to continue to encourage our youngsters to be active thinkers and learners and use our history as a grounds for growth.
You mean the true history?
Yeah, and without getting into, but that's where we're at with that.
Right, yeah, I assume that this town would be that way, that would be. And whether it's, doesn't matter what party. You said fair and balanced?
Absolutely.
That's the way it should be.
Sure.
And all parties should work together, obviously, to create a common goal. And as long as the common goal, in my eyes, and I'm sure in a lot of people's eyes, I don't know how many people are really aware of it, in a sleepy town like North Grand.
Sure.
You know, a lot of people are on the internet, but they're, they might be at the wrong place, or they're listening to the news, and they might.
But getting misinformation.
And they're, they're getting misinformation or, or no information. So, I, I pay a lot of attention. I no longer have young children, but I have grandchildren, and I'm very concerned about them, so I'm always questioning them as to what, you know, what they're learning in the schools and stuff, but, yeah.
We're very traditional, we pledge allegiance every single day, we have a moment of silence.
That's excellent. I just wanted to get a feel of that.
We're, we're.
I just wanted to get a feel for this Board of Education, because it's creeping into every single corner of this country, and people are now standing up and waking up and realizing that, you know what, in the counties that are trying to push this on the schools, they're, they're coming together and they're, they're pushing back, and that's a good thing. That's what I wanted to just relate, that, that, that would be my goal. Should that ever come to pass in this town, I would be strictly, you know, against it, and I would, I would fight to, I would make, make people aware of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then those student reps. We're looking forward to that next year, maybe to get student reps back, that would be nice.
Absolutely. That, we're, we plan on having two reps next year.
That's wonderful.
Sitting, and we had that for years, and then with COVID, we obviously couldn't have, you know, the numbers at the table, but we will have two seniors next year.
That's great.
And we'll move on to the minutes from the previous meeting. Oh, sorry. Second question. Second, June 17. Any, Beth made the motion, do you have a second? To approve the minutes from the June 17, 2021 Board of Education meeting, Mary?
This correction.
Yep.
On page seven, the clerk of the works for the high school project, the name should be Marty Lisca.
Not Lisca.
And I gave this, I gave this spelling to.
You gave it to Mary already?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Another change.
Any other changes?
Did you say page two, because I could've.
Page seven.
Page seven.
Seven.
Thank you.
Marty Lisca, with an L.
Of the June 17. The one that's working right now.
Okay.
It's in the, Mary, it's building, it's right in the middle of that thing.
Thank you.
Motion to the special meeting.
Well, we have to vote on this one first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stain? Okay, then I'll, somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 13, 2021 Board of Education special meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, July 13, 2021 special meeting.
For the second. Any discussion? I just looked at the attendance, like, who can do it all in favor? Aye or aye?
Aye.
Okay. Personality Superintendent has received a resignation from Ms. Katie Jones, General Music and Choral Teacher at North Grandford Intermediate School, effective July 8, 2021. And you want to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Katie Jones, General Music and Choral Teacher at North Grandford Intermediate School, effective July 8, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
I'd like to thank Ms. Jones for her time in North Grandford, and she was exceptional. While she was here, she did a wonderful job. She is taking a position much closer to her home, and it's just choral instruction at an elementary school, so it's a shift from middle down to elementary, and it's in her town, and she was, it's a once in a lifetime, so I support her 100% and thank her for, for being such a great employee.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Pointless, you want to take over some?
I do, I did pass out the authority to hire, as you know, during the summer months, in lieu of having a meeting when we are rapidly interviewing and hiring. You had voted to give me permission to hire, so I have a list of names here. You'll see, we have been really busy. It's an interesting dilemma right now. We're finding the workforce to be very thin. When you look at non-certified positions, paras and other bargaining unit jobs, where it's, it's hard to get people to come back to work. And, and we are, we're down three employees right now in our food service. That's a shout out to people who are interested in working in the food service industry, please go online. Even finding certified teachers, though, we had some retirements and we had some, some transfers, but the administrative team was vigilant in getting the word out, and if you look at the list of probably, I'm guessing about 15, 36, 9, 12, more than 15, on the top half of the page, about 16, where they're from, their backgrounds, and many of them are experienced teachers, you'll see master, step eight, a PhD, six years, step seven. Usually, we can go out and find a bachelor's one right out of college, but the.
Not happening.
It's not happening, especially when you look at world language, science, or math, they're at a premium. And so we go out, and we actually try to recruit and, and look at other people that we know that are graduates of North Grandford, that are teaching in surrounding towns, and we recruit them, and, and we've had some success doing that to bring our own back here to teach. So, I'm thrilled with the efforts and the quality of instruction that we are bringing on to work with our youngsters. So, kudos to the administrative team. We had some transfers internally that are just moving building to building and some lateral moves, so if there's no questions, we'll move on from that.
I have a question, are the highlight, highlighted ones?
They're yet to sssss.
No.
Have not signed yet.
Okay, I was just curious.
Those are the three newest hires. We, we did hire Jerome Nurse, we're fully staffed in our nursing, and the other two, did he come in today? I think he was scheduled to come in today.
I'm not sure.
Special ed teacher at the high school. So those are the ones that have not signed yet.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, I didn't look like you're.
No, 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 I thought you were asking a question.
No, I just wanted to know why with the summer language, that was all.
Salary is set.
Yeah.
They just have to come in and sign their contract.
Okay.
Okay?
Is there a timeframe that they have to sign at any time?
The, the one gentleman at the bottom, I think he signed today, and I think the nurse may be scheduled tomorrow. They're anxious to come in and sign, sign their contract.
Awesome.
They know, you know, the, the pecking order for getting in as quick to sign as you can, because anyone hired after you, then, you know, if we ever get to a point where we're riffing. Right, seniority, exactly. Okay, so that being said, recognition at this time, I do not have any recognition or donations. There are obviously no field trips, the healthy food certification is what we spoke about, I believe, two months ago, with the options and choices for our reimbursement for the maximum amount from the federal government and the state. We will be doing, and this is for clarification, this year, the students will get free lunch again, okay? If they order a second lunch, or anything off of the à la carte, or an ice cream cone, something that doesn't come with the standard lunch, they will have to pay for it, okay? So, there was some.
That wasn't the case this year?
So this year was just the standard lunch, we had no cash going, we did, we did not exchange any money at all.
Okay, but so you didn't do any à la carte?
Right, so now we're going back to our normal, but you're still, you get one, every student gets a, a option for a free lunch, okay? For this year.
Lunch free, and we will have à la carte.
We will have à la carte, and we will.
That they'll have to pay for.
That they'll have to pay for. Okay?
But why, I thought we already certified it, that's why I'm just confused.
We have to, we have to vote on it, in that we are serving reimbursable meals at all times from all sorts, it'll, you'll, when you read through it.
Oh, okay.
You'll see, so what this does, it holds us to the, this is the, the federal government with their requirements for serving size, what we serve, when we serve it, after school hours, so as you read these next three motions.
No, I, I remember, I just thought we did it, I don't know.
We didn't, we didn't vote, no.
We just discussed it.
We just discussed it.
But there's, there's changes to the language.
Language.
That's the yellow.
You want to read something?
I need someone to read.
Oh, so that's why, I just wondered why you're so hyped.
To read through.
All right, I make the motion, proceed to CGS Section 10-215F, North Grandford Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under the jurisdiction of North Grandford Board of Education, and that exempt from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education, will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. The certification shall include all foods on purchase sale, for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, full cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by school or non-school organizations.
Second. Any discussion?
Your mouthful, huh?
Yeah.
Get a deep breath for the next one.
There's too many to do. You, you can do the next one.
So.
All right. Okay, then we'll move on to the food section, somebody roll with it.
All right, I'll make the motion, am I doing the whole thing?
Yeah.
Those, okay. The North Grandford Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, sale is at the location of the event. And, three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An "event" quotations is an occurrence that involves more than just a regular scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, an intercollegiate debate, an event but soccer practicing, or, sorry, it is our event, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team, team meetings are not. The regular school day quotations is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location quotations means where the event is being held.
Second.
See, the highlighted parts are what the state injected in order.
Right, so there's, there's new language.
It's, it's, it's the statutory.
That's all you had to say, just new language.
Because the chapter of the Board of Education is doing this, but.
Kind of like a pun.
Wait, right, the, the state added the differentiation between a soccer game and a soccer practice, like.
Whatever.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Do you want me to do this one for you?
Nah, I'll keep the motions going. We'll keep rolling like this.
You're on a roll.
All right, motion. North Grandford Board of Education will allow the sale to students of all beverages not listed to in Section 10-221Q of Connecticut General Staff Code during the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with the event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And, three, the beverages are not sold in the vending machine or school store. An "event" quotations is an occurrence that involves more than just a regular scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. School day quotations is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location quotations means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Martha?
Thank you, John.
Can't wait to hear your financial report.
So in front of you, you should have a financial report. The description is a little lengthy this month, I will not go through it all. Basically, just to update you on the new financial system, we actually met with the Tyler Technology Group over the phone the other day. We officially switched from sales to implementation. We were introduced to our project manager, and we've set aside August 17, 18, and 19 as our kickoff meeting. One of the first things we're going to do is sit down and start to detail out our chart of accounts, so that's one of the very first things that we're going to work on, and then the rest of the project will be mapped out very, very carefully by the, by the project manager from Tyler. So it's exciting, we're getting there.
Yeah, and the town's involved in all of this, they're doing the same thing, they'll all, they'll all be on one.
The town is, also, has started their implementation, because it's two separate databases, the implementation is separate, but, you know, it's nice to know that.
Always separate.
It is, yeah, so if they're on a different, when they're on a different time schedule or week or vacation schedules, we can keep going and, and vice versa, so.
Awesome.
I think it's, it's going to work out very nicely.
We won't interrupt each other.
Yeah.
If we're doing a separate payroll for something, and they're in the middle of theirs, if, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were combined, we may not be able to get, get into the system to, to run something special that we need to do.
That's correct, and then if they ran theirs before we were able to run our deduction checks or file our state and federal taxes, everything could combine, which would be a big mess.
Disastrous.
Yeah, so, it's best this way.
Now, can they get into Board of Education files and put in their question? That would totally suck up.
It's our intention to give the finance department on the town side a login and password so that they could actually go in and look at what they need to.
So we would just be Anthony Esposito and.
Anita.
And Anita.
Yeah.
So, and they work very closely anyway, so it's really.
So if it's necessity, they can.
They can, yeah.
As far as audit for fiscal year 2021, that process has started. The auditor was here last week and a couple weeks ago for a day, they did their testing on both the payroll and accounts payable side. I listed out some of the things that they required during the testing. In short, they would pull a vendor or a employee, and we would have to supply the documentation for each of those random tests that, that she asked for. So, all in all, so far, so good, and she'll be back in the fall once the EFS, which is the state report for expenditures, is complete, and we'll see her in September or October. You have two financial reports in front of you, one for 2021 and one for 2122. I did mark the top so that you don't get confused, because the heading is rather small. If you look at your narrative that I gave you, I kind of went into detail of what specific things I wanted to highlight under each of the objects. I will let you know that out of the $250,000 that we thought we would need for the Food Service Department, we actually only needed $80,000, so that was, that was a nice surprise. And I will have a full accounting for you for the Food Service Department at a later date, I just don't have it ready for you. Again, you can read through all the narrative at your convenience, but when we left here at the close of business on June 30, all of the budget had been accounted for, 100% of it. As of today, there's $43,000 remaining. So the reason why there's a difference is because, you know, when you buy paper or textbooks or whatever, you put in an estimated amount for shipping, sometimes prices change, so in reality, right now, we have $43,800 remaining that will fluctuate. All of our open purchase orders will need to be closed out by, I believe it's October For the 2122, we're just actually beginning the process. You'll see, there's really not a whole lot of activity on the report when you look at it. We are, we're paying our 12-month staff, which is the administrators, our custodians, and your 12-month secretaries. Your summer camp program goes through a separate fund, so the camp that you, that we have running over at TVES, that's not part of the general fund, that's separate, so you won't see those expenditures here. We did receive our renewal for property and liability insurance, and I just want to let you know that the cyber liability policy is much more than what we paid last year. It went from approximately $2,200 to over $8,000, which is huge. When I called the broker and questioned, it's basically because of what's going on in the world with ransomware and all of the other cyber issues that's going on, so they explained it as the market is now hardened. What I found interesting was that the board and the town basically pay the same amount for the cyber liability policies, even though we're different. Our commercial vehicle policy also increased.
I see that.
Almost $3,500, and in total, our policy for three vehicles is over $14,000.
Why is that?
And I questioned that.
John, you're not getting tickets, are you?
I said.
Driving around town.
I said, for three vehicles, $14,000, that's absurd. And I was told that the, way back when, decades ago, there was a percentage agreement agreed on between the town and the board. So we're actually not paying for the vehicles that we have, it's, all goes back to some historical split, and I.
We, we have one vehicle, two vehicles.
I did.
Two vehicles.
I did attach to your notes there, the email from the broker for both the cyber and the auto, so you can read it for yourself.
But isn't that something we can discuss with the town? I mean, we're paying $14,000 for two vehicles, put the vehicles in their own names and pay them, pay their own insurance for it.
No, for insur, it's not.
No, I know, but it would be sarcastic.
But yeah.
But can't we reach out?
But yes.
Something definitely needs to be done to make that more fair.
So we'll, we'll look into that. So we have, we have two pickup trucks. One is assigned to Mr. Florio, the other one is a fairly new pickup that stays at the high school and is used by the district when we need to move things, but that, that's it, it's two pickup trucks total.
Truck's good? Here in shape with your vehicle?
Not mine?
Yeah.
My truck?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, sure, we knew it.
Don't, don't offer them a new truck, listen. The budget, the budget's already settled, and we're not.
Oh, it says, it says right, it says right here in the email, but they're not opposed to changing the percentages, however that would need to be done prior to bid season and through the BOE and.
Well, that's, that's the broker saying.
That's the broker, not the, that's not the town.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's all the ballgame.
Yeah.
And I'm curious how far back the agreement was, and did we have more vehicles then? Did it make sense? And now, you know, maybe we had more vehicles at one point, we paid a higher percentage, but.
We haven't had more than two vehicles.
Miss insane.
No, we only had two vehicles for quite a while now, we've always just had two.
So we'll look into it.
That's great. Unless this was like an agreement made in like, God only knows, but.
So please look through everything, if you ever have any questions or want, you know, more information, stop in, call, reach out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Capital Improvement update.
So I'm going to just go through quickly with the list, this was something that was requested, I have Mr. Florio here this evening for specific things that I want him to speak to, because these have been projects that we have been working on for several years. As you know, we save quite a bit of money with, with John and his background and his certifications to do a lot of our ATRAC, a lot of the things that he's able to do, so I'm going to go by buildings, starting with the high school, as you know, we're underway, we'll speak to that a little later with the building committee, but for 90% of the building that is still standing, minus the 10% that will be demolished, the crew has done an amazing job. They've literally removed every piece of furniture from every classroom, they've had to reestablish what we're going to keep into those areas where 13 classrooms are going to be removed. So, if, if you do not recall, we'll be sharing rooms throughout the day, 13 classrooms are being demolished. So, it's been a lot of work, they've done a great job, we brought some summer help on, some young kids who are getting real, I think, great experience and a taste of when you're in a 90-degree building, and it's the heat of summer, and you're waxing a floor with a fan blowing on you. You appreciate your building, take care of your building, and, and understand what hard work is, so that's worked out really well, John, I think, with our, our youngsters helping our, our crew. So, that's underway, things are going well, the architect and Gil Bane have been working with our custodial crew, and have been really flexible with us. The middle school, we're still talking about the masonry repair and what's going to happen there because of the leakage, it looks like it's a, a roof issue with the engineering of that roof, and they're going to look to come up with a plan to remediate the, the water leaking from that, so that's more to come. Summer cleaning is underway, they're removing some of the carpet and, and putting tile in in different parts of the building. All of the HVAC has been changed, as you know, with the COVID, we went and put LED lights in, and we were piping all of the air that came into the building through LED lights, so all the filters and all those lights were changed. Updated the fuel storage tank, that's done, sprinkler, fire alarm, emergency lighting tested, complete. Auditorium, crossover bridge is now about 75% there, 25% has been removed. Sprinkler, fire, emergency, all tested and done. We're looking at flooring in the front entryway, replacing that. TBS, probably the biggest piece there, and I'm going to have John speak to the unit ventilators, but there's a bunch of classroom furniture that's been coming in, assembled and moved throughout. We did demolish the FRC building behind TBS that had long outlived its lifespan. The, the raccoons had a great hiding place, and, but that's over now. I think they relocated, and we wish them well, but they wreaked havoc in there. Lighting system complete, two new oil burners, that was big. So, John, why don't you start with Tutankham Valley, and just speak to the unit, unit ventilators?
So Tutankham Valley, we're on the balance of unit ventilators, that was a, you know, capital improvement project, we only had a chance to install six the first time, the remaining ones are being installed now, have the eight done on the lower classroom level. Have the eight done on the lower classroom level. We're working around the camp. We have a lot going on in Totokan Valley. So we demolished the portals in the back. We had to do some work in order to get those demolished. We had a disconnected bunch of stuff, but that's done. The six that are in the back that we originally installed that were operating for heating last year, we had the air conditioner condensers being installed, being hooked up now, so those will have air conditioning. The eight that are put down on the lower level that I am currently hooking up for the heating piping, when they get done, hooking the six up on the upper level, they'll come down, hook the eight up down on the lower level. So they'll be, those will be heating and air conditioning both. We have two more units out of the wing, but we have to wait for the camp rooms to empty. We don't want to chase them out of those rooms, so we'll do those two last. Then we'll just have to order the balance of the ones for next year's budget or, you know, however you want to do it to get the rest of the rooms done.
How many do we need?
Um, you're going to need seven, eight, nine, you only, you only about 12.
Okay.
About 12.
So it takes John about a day to remove and.
Takes about a day to remove the old ones, disconnect every, remove the old ones, install it on, pipe it back up. The reason being is when they switched Totokan Valley over to heating, I don't know how many who's ever went to Totokan Valley, it was all electric. Then they put the heating system in later, then they couldn't afford to electric heat.
Right.
So what they did was they retrofitted, so they, they came down and they went through all the classrooms. So rather than being individual, you do one at a time, you have to take a whole section out, the piping goes through everyone. And back then they used what was a, kind of a new system of a galvanized steel pipe that was out there and it thought was going to last forever. And so you have to strip it all the way back to the heating mains that are in the hallways and then go all the way back to the classroom, the new piping. So it gets, gets a little time to do it.
Yeah.
A little time to do it. But those eight will be installed. Probably got a few more days and they'll be done.
And those are heating and cooling?
Those are the heat, those will be heating and cooling. So the only thing we had to do is we had to bring electrical work in because we didn't have enough electrical power down there for all those condensers. So our electrician, y'all, has those parts on order. He's going to be in in about a week and a half to start hooking up, start hooking the electrical, all those. We did save some money. We had to order a transformer in order to do that. The transformer that was off in the portals was still good.
Oh, nice.
We took the transformer from the portals and we're going to reuse it for the, for the air conditioning system. So we're saving about $19,000 there.
Wow.
Which is, which is good.
The raccoon can take that with the dog. Nobody can take that with the way to the boat.
But yeah, so that, that's how it's going. The two oil burners we, we purchased because the original oil burners had been giving us problems there. So we purchased two to let, to get oil burners energy efficient. So we're going to change those over. Hopefully we'll have the problems anymore. They got the oil burners over to Totokan Valley. So you've got to have, you know, you've got new roofs, you're going to have new heating and air conditioning, you have new oil burners, you've got to have some new lighting in there, some similar work we're doing. So Totokan Valley's coming up. One thing I am doing with Totokan Valley and looking into, there is a energy rebate for updated lighting through Waller Electric. They'll give us 40% back on what we purchased. But your savings is about $22,000 a year switching that school over to LED. So you'll make your, basically it's going to cost about $100,000 to do the job. They'll give you back 40. It's going to cost you $60,000, but you're going to make that back in a few years.
And we'll, we'll pay that over time through our electric bill. And, and it's, it's short money, a great investment, better lighting, and it, it needs to be done. We've done the other side of town.
All the other schools are.
All the other schools are LED.
All the other schools are up to the light now. All of those schools are LED.
Interest rates great on the loan too.
Yeah, fantastic program. So we really got to look into that, hopefully jump into that. It's not going to be offered, it's not going to be offered forever.
Right.
We'll take advantage of it.
I grabbed the paperwork, I gave the paperwork to Mark, we should forward it to you guys, take a look at it. Plus it'll upgrade that lighting there. Totokan Valley.
It's dark.
It's dark.
Very dimly lit school.
Yeah.
So what happens is an energy, a lighting engineer comes out and does it for you. So they get lighting that's being for education and so it'll brighten that school right up a little bit.
Yeah.
Nice, it's dark there. Thank you, John.
John, a question. Did UI, our president, North Bear, offering incentive the way to Waller Electric?
UI, UI already gave it to it. UI came through, did the auditorium, did the meeting school, and just completed Jerome Harrison.
We've got a great, a great deal on the other end of town.
Oh, we got a great deal on that one, yes.
But Waller Electric is cheaper, obviously, the electricity here.
Waller Electric's range is cheaper, so they don't, they don't come in and do the whole job for you like UI does. UI just wants to lower your, you know, your consumption. Waller Electric, because they're giving you such a good deal, they're not going to come in and do it for free. Their electric rate's a lower, so they, but they say, hey, we'll give you 40% back.
And, and Waller Electric is phenomenal with efficiency and when we have a power outage during the quarter.
I have Waller Electric. I have Waller Electric.
I do too.
Waller Electric's great.
They're fantastic.
So that's Totokan.
And Jerome Harrison, our Cooley Tower, that's the other Capitol Building job. Our Cooley Tower is being delivered at 7 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Great.
Finally. So that'll be all forwarded tomorrow and we'll arrange to get the crane, y'all, and swap off the old one and get the new one in there running. So that'll complete that project. And like I said before, that project, that Capitol Building project was $100,000 from the town. We're going to end up doing that job ourselves for about 40 grand. So the other 60, the town council said, re-appropriated to another, to another border bed.
Yeah.
Project we're going to do, so.
He's already thinking about his truck.
There's just 60 for the lighting.
Yeah.
And you had to save the money, I'm going to save the money.
Yeah.
But yeah, Jerome Harrison, you know, that's, that's the big thing there, you know? Otherwise, all the schools are on schedule. They're all getting their cleaning done, y'all, they're, they're on schedule. The.
Auger House.
The Auger House, we demolished the old, the old kitchen and the bathroom. We just ordered an exterior and interior door. We changed the door, we changed the bathroom door, got the new floors in. We're going to take the cabinet work that we took out of Diane Arndt's building, we're going to install that in the kitchen. We're going to put the bathroom in. And we're going to go with a metal ramp, rather than building a wood ramp, we're going to buy a, going to buy a metal handicap ramp for that back entrance.
Awesome.
The cost of wood right, right now is prohibitive. Overtime, steel, steel ramp is the way to go.
So as soon as we can get all of that up to run, we, matter of fact, we just talked to a drywall guy, he's going to come in to start drywall. It's a little bit of work, we had to go ahead of time there. We're bouncing around for building to building. We're trying to get everything done, but right now everything looks good, we're on schedule.
I take it the bathroom is handicapped as well?
Yes.
Yeah, the main area is going to be handicapped. That's why we have to, we have to open the doorways.
To make it wider.
We got the 36-inch doorways. The original bathroom door there was only two feet, so we got to cut the wall off a little bit, you know? Do a little work here and there.
So you got a budget?
But the maker.
Good. Thank you, John, very much.
Just, just closing out on the Auger House, this was a great cooperative effort.
Yeah.
To take a building that was standing in, in dire need of repair, putting it to use for our students, our 18 to 21-year-old program, for those kids to have a place to go. It's safe, that's up to date with everything in, and having to help people do it. It's a great project and the town should really be proud of it.
Yeah.
So kudos. John, thank you.
Love you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that the next item, the cave that we wait till the entire board is here to discuss that because I want everyone's input. I've already gone through authority to hire. The next part is going to be an executive session. The town manager pending COVID. I continue to have my emergency meetings every other Thursday now with the emergency service team here in town with police, fire, ambulance, town manager, East Shore Health, and obviously everything is going around COVID right now and the reopening of schools. And they're waiting to see what the governor is going to do in the next several days with that. I think you know with what we experienced last year and our ability to stay open five days a week and get through the year, there's a great deal of energy, effort, and commitment to have our children be to come, be able to come to school every day, five days a week. So our, our plan is we are, we're not offering distance learning. We're coming back to school. We are open five days a week. I don't want to get into the mask thing right now.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know.
It's not, for the record, it's not up to us to make the decision. We have to wait.
I just, I, I will say for the record, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the youngsters going another year in a mask. I'm not going to get into, and I understand there's, there's two sides to, to everything and there's, but I'm really concerned about long-term effect of, of, of children distancing, being in a mask, and psychologically what that, that does. There's a lot out there on that. It's, it's a conversation we continue to have. I'm going to bring you in on a special meeting, I guarantee you, the next three weeks or four weeks before opening, when we do get more information, because it's a team effort, we all need to be on the same page. We're going to agree, we're going to disagree, but at the end of the day, we'll, we'll do what's right for our kids, but it's best, best for the kids.
Thank you.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Last second. Do you think next year, like this year, Wednesdays, every Wednesday was happening?
We're, we're, we're not going every Wednesday, but I did give additional Wednesdays, so it's, it's still the one Wednesday a month. Anytime there's a shortened month because of a holiday, they did not get an extra Wednesday. If it's a full month without a holiday break, I added another half-day Wednesday. So we're going to give the teachers the opportunity to have some more time because I think we're going, this is not going to go away, this is going to continue and we're going to need time as one of our commodities that we can give to our teachers. We're still offering our FRC for the parents after care. Parking rent is looking to do some additional programs so that our, our students are able to go somewhere if there is a childcare issue. So that's the plan. Okay, renovation project. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to both you and Beth if you want to update us on.
Yeah, we're, we're entering exciting times for the permanent project building committee. I'll meet as, as you have interviewed, that we are well on our way to demolition. One of the other things that I don't know if you mentioned, but some of the other areas where our town is benefiting, North Bear Fire Department did some, some training on top of that school and they were able to do some ventilation work, which you don't get to do in a training facility very often. You don't get, even in a training facility, the, the, what a real roof is like. So they're able to go in there and use their saws and really get an idea of how to, try to draw out a ball and bat.
Living damage.
And a saw.
Yeah, but it's, we play.
For the Redskins.
Yeah.
And, you know, they got, they have to be able to get some real, um, practical experience on a very important feature within bottom firefighting, which is ventilation and, and a real experience, you know, a real, a real feeling.
So that's a. Subcentral SWAT team is also going to use to demolish part of the building too, to do training too. So we.
That's fantastic.
Given that opportunity. So we joined with two other towns and we have two or three members of our police force on the SWAT team. So they're going to come in with the K-9 and they're going to do a lot of drills, which is great. We're really happy to help them.
So we're, we're doing, I think we're almost fully abated of more, most caustic material in that area of the building. Every, the bridges now out and sealed on both sides, which is great. We're well on our way to the next step, which is taking down that portion of the building and then sealing it up. We have new, the mechanics and, and pad for the elevator. So that's going to be, you know, backup functional, choose ADA compliance that we did to have that, you know, in place and that will stay in place for time being until we take out the other, it's Y or the second aspect of the, of the diamond and have the actual footprint of the school built. One of the other exciting things is that the state, we, we were, we made it in time to get the review of the state, our architect went up to the state and to get the approved drawings to allow us to start to bid for steel. And as you know, steel's up, we've been right now, Amazon's taken up a huge, I think it's been 14, 18% of steel coming into Connecticut, they've purchased and built buildings. Good news is those buildings are now built, that steel's up, so new steel's coming in. It should, it should actually allow for timing to be a little quicker and hopefully pricing will go down. But we've, we had our, they said it was going to be a week or two to get the approval.
It was two days?
It was two days. So that's kudos to our architectural team and Gil Bain and, and the folks in the permanent project building committee and people like John, that they're, you know, we've kind of got this plan together and it's moving forward. And we're going to really break around and get this thing moving along, go into the first phase, get that demo done, and then we're going to start building that first part of the school. School is great. We have, you know, value engineering properly and we're, you know, we have some things on add alternatives that we'll keep towards to even have, you know, a better, you know, outcome. But I think as it continues to go along, everyone will be very pleased with the outcome it is. It's going to be a beautiful school that town desperately needs.
Great. Thank you again, Jeff, Beth, for your time and energy and efforts because this is.
Monday off.
I have Monday off.
It's not, it's not a race. It's a very.
The first Monday off is a regular.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
It's fine. You're going to get us a special meeting by saying.
Giovanni's.
Yeah, exactly, Giovanni.
Sue.
Negotiations will go to executive session.
Okay. That's it for me. It's your committee.
Negotiations will go to executive session. Did the, well, do the last step. Was the contract ratified due now?
For the custodians, I.
Contract is.
Was it ratified?
Independent agreement, but we didn't get the copies, our lighting, get the copies out to the guys.
Okay, so it's not ready to be voted on tonight?
We're really close.
Yeah, yeah, it's TA.
Yeah.
So he's got to get the copies out to the ranking files and they can.
So we'll vote on it in the next meeting. Okay, that's fine. Let me see, budget and operations, no meaning, curriculum, instruction and strategic planning, no meaning, pension, no meaning, policy, no meaning, basis, no meaning. Building committee, you got? Communication. Okay, so before we go to executive session, any visitors press want to speak? Go to the board, David. Did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say, actually, thank you to the superintendent for what you were saying, I don't know if he's made a decision on, but I, I appreciate your thoughts and anticipation and what you were worried about for next year is exactly what we're worried about for our son in the intermediate school and another year in a mask, assuming that it can help on all of them.
Thank you.
Which is not good.
Thank you.
Go to the board. I'm trying to think of any, I know there was a little, it's been a quiet, huh?
We're in July.
We're in the winter summer.
There's no children, so.
Sports are done.
We're lonely.
Going back, you are going to go to the. I saw the sale, that was that Big White, it's not by Big White, they have 50% off and the summer sale, very impressive.
See that?
And the 50%.
That's wrong.
There's going to be candy out there for Halloween and next.
The costumes are out. It doesn't mean that. The costumes are out in PJs. Okay, does somebody want to make a motion for me? Go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section 1-200, 6A of the Connecticut General Statute discussing agenda items, evaluation of contract extension of superintendent and of negotiations.
Second, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we can go down to the other room. There's cookies here if anybody would like cookies. And we can go down to the other ones. Okay, and we're back in session. I think we have some motions.
All right. We're making a motion on selling contract, seller increase motion. Motion to extend the current contract to Scott's Gunmakers, Superdaddy Schools through July 3, 2024.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Nafry?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
I'll do roll calls on all these, Mary, okay?
Say that again?
I'm going to do roll calls on these few motions.
Yes. That's it?
Okay.
Motion to approve a 2% wage increase for Scott's Gunmakers, Superdaddy Schools through 2021, 2022 school year and cash out of three additional and unused vacation days.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Nafry?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Star.
Yes. Okay. Motion, motion to approve 2% wage increase for Bruce Williams, Director of Technology for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Nafry?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes. Motion to approve a 2% wage increase for Douglas Handi, System Administrator for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Chair Nafry?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
Okay, then our next regularly Board of Education meeting is scheduled from Thursday, August 19th, 2020. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah. Do we did, did we do the two for Bruce and, and, and Martha? We're going to hold off.
We're going to hold off for one, a couple of them.
No, no, that's the.
Did we have anything to do? We did, we do have to do Martha's. Yeah, we do have to do Martha's.
It's not in here.
Thank you, I totally, yeah.
Yeah.
Mary, she was holding off and talking about it. But we said to.
Yeah.
Something.
Maybe I missed one, I'll say here.
But Mary, the motions that we just did, can you just clarify? We did for.
I think.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I did, I read over it. Okay.
Okay, good catch. Yes, thank you, that good catch.
Sorry, Martha, we love her.
All right, wait, wait a minute. So Mary, we did 2% for Scott, extension for Scott. We did Hand, Douglas.
Right, and Williams.
Yes, I, I, you see, this is a pirate.
I know, it's late, I know.
Okay. Then I go back to the motion. Motion to approve 2% wage increase for Martha Vaughn, Director of Personnel and Business for the 2021, 22, 22 school year.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Nafry?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosamo?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Second. Oh, are you seconding? I know, I mean, you looked at me for second and so. I'm looking for a second. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Still on. Okay.
Turn us off.
Are we?
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned. Can I go?